will now come to order, we please stand for the playing of the national anthem. Councilmember Faber, would you please lay this in the pledge?
[Inaudible] To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, it's a great honor to invite my Morehouse brother and pastor Colin Jones, pastor of Advent United Christ Church of Christ, to be with us this evening. Pastor, welcome council.
Eternal Spirit, we are so grateful for this precious opportunity to be in your presence. God, we thank you very much for waking us up this morning and yes, starting us on our way. Some of us have aches and pains in our bodies, but we're still here. We're here for one purpose, and that is to serve. God, thank you so much for blessing us with this city, the city of Columbus. God, there's so much joy in this city. There is so much forward movement in this city. But God, there's also a lot of pain in this city as well. There's a lot of struggle and strife in this city. And so right now, Lord, we continue to lift up this community and we put it in your hands. We lift up its people, oh Lord. We lift up its people who are seeking to, uh, who are seeking a better life. And we, oh God, are your servants. We have been positioned for such a time as this to help and assist them in improving their quality of life. And so, God, we lift up this city council. We lift up the leaders in this place to do just that. It's not about serving themselves, it's about serving others. And so, God, I pray that you will empower them. I pray that you will equip them for the task at hand and use us as other community leaders to surround them, to hold their hands up, and to encourage them to do what you have tasked them to do. We lift up this meeting that's about to take place, and we pray for a spirit of peace, we pray for a spirit of cooperation, and more than anything else, we pray, oh Lord, that everything will be executed by a divine spirit of love. We love you and we bless you, that of your heart. Say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Faber, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Faber, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communication received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications we ran to the record?
Not this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any resolutions by member of council? Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Mitch Brown.
Thank you, Council President. I have one resolution this evening. I would like to ask Mr. Don Zinner of the First Responders Face-Off Foundation, Chris Janiak and Division of Fire, and Mr. Blake Griffin from the Division of Police, to please approach the podium. Resolution 0057-X2019, to declare the week of February 10th to be First Responders Week in Columbus, Ohio. Whereas dedicated professionals including emergency dispatchers, law enforcement personnel, firefighters, emergency medical services, and search and rescue teams, and many other heroes of public safety comprise the core of first responders who protect and aid the public during emergencies and in times of crisis. And whereas Columbus first responders are highly trained professionals equipped with specialized education and skill sets that enable them to effectively address situations of urgency and protect the public's property and save lives. And whereas every day our first responders risk their own safety and personal well-being and the performance of their duties willingly serving and protecting the citizens of Columbus while eliminating potential threats to the public's safety and welfare. And whereas First Responders Face-Off Foundation supports first responders in numerous capacities, be it in scholarships for children of injured first responders, efforts in detecting and reducing occupational diseases, financial assistance for first responders in times of tragedy and loss, and assistance in mobility and accommodations of first responders facing life-altering injuries. And whereas the Fourth Annual First Responder Face-Off will take place on Saturday, February 16th, at the Schattenstein Center pitting Columbus Fire Hockey against Columbus Police Hockey for the Buckeye Cup, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Columbus, let this council does hereby declare the week of February 10th, 2019 to be First Responders Week and expresses its gratitude to all of the Columbus first responders for their outstanding contributions to the safety and well-being of the citizens of Columbus. Any of my colleagues make any comments? Hearing none, I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Faber, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And in order to keep it civil, we're going to have Mr. Zinder speak rather than someone from police or from fire.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, councilmembers. It's, uh, four years ago, I don't think that we ever thought that we'd be here today as we've grown the annual charity hockey game between fire and police as much as we have. It's an incredible honor for our foundation and myself to work with these fine professionals and to be able to showcase them to our public in a fun, yet competitive way. We'll see, uh, we'll see what happens here Saturday afternoon, but, uh, we're grateful for your support and we appreciate it. Thank you.
I think it should be known that fire has won consistently. Uh, Mr. Griffin, do you wish to make any comments about that, sir?
I didn't think that needed to be pointed out, but I would say that they might be in for a surprise this Saturday.
That's the way, I like the way you talk. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Just want to announce that this Thursday, February 14th, if you have nothing else to do on Valentine's Day, we are holding Community Hours from 4:30 to 6:00 at Panera Bread at 875 Bethel Road. So come on out, we'll have some little candy hearts for you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Faber.
Thank you, President Harden. Today, tonight I have two announcements. I will also host my first set of Community Hours on Tuesday, February 12th, so I'm not interrupting Valentine's Day. At 1:00 PM, located at the Columbus Metropolitan Library, Franklinton Branch on West Town Street. Community Hours are a great opportunity for individuals to address their questions and concerns with council, and I look forward to hearing firsthand from our residents. Next, I will convene an Economic Development and Housing Committee Public Hearing this Wednesday, February 13th, to be held in council chambers. First, at 3:00 PM, we will discuss the proposed Economic Development Division Fee Schedule. This proposal includes updates to the Application Amendment and Administrative Fee Schedule. The exhaustive list of proposed changes will be provided at the hearing. Anyone that's interested in addressing council on this matter must fill out a speaker slip between 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM on the day of the hearing. Next, at 4:00 PM, same day, February 13th, we will review the pilot proposal and provide information on the Central Ohio Community Land Trust. On February 1st, 2019, the Central Ohio Community Improvement Corporation announced the creation of the Central Ohio Community Land Trust. This initiative is supported by the Franklin County Treasurer's Office and the Franklin County Commissioners. Anyone interested in addressing council on this matter must fill out a speaker slip between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM on the day of the hearing. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to our office at 645-5524. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Faber. President Protem.
Thank you, President Harden. At this time, I would like to invite Beth Urban of the Highland Youth Garden and the other representatives from the garden to the podium as I introduce Resolution 0058-X2019 to recognize and celebrate the Highland Youth Garden on their 10th anniversary. The Highland Youth Garden is a community garden spanning nearly half an acre in the Hilltop area, founded in 2009 by caring individuals who began working with local schools and youth centers to plan positive garden-based activities for children and youth with the mission of enhancing the Hilltop community through growing food and educating neighbors. Throughout the years, with the commitment of many volunteers of all ages and a valuable partnership with Franklin County Master Gardener Volunteers, the Highland Youth Garden grew to become the thriving organization it is today, hosting hands-on gardening classes and programming. Since 2009, the garden has served approximately 500 students from Highland Elementary and more than 200 people every week during the summer months. In addition to their educational programming, they also host monthly celebrations to provide healthy, garden-inspired meals for children and neighbors together as a community. And I don't know if any of my colleagues have ever had a chance to be there, but what they're doing is really special. I remember one time coming out and you all explaining the tomato was the pizza sauce and watching it just click for some of the elementary students. And so really excited by your ongoing commitment, by the space and the investment you've made to the community. And so I'll turn it over to Beth for any comments, and then if my colleagues have anything to add. Beth, podium is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano, for recognizing the garden. We're very excited that you took the time to recognize us and that your longstanding support of the garden. In the 10 years that we've been working on the west side of Columbus, we've had approximately 4,000 students come through the garden to learn where their food comes from and also to connect to their community. If you've never been to the garden, I encourage you, please, please come to the garden. It's an area of beauty. I also want to specifically thank Councilmember Tyson for her longstanding support of community gardens. Without your two support, yours and Councilmember Stenziano's, we wouldn't be where we are today. We have 300 to 400 people volunteer in the garden a year. What you're looking at standing up here are our board members. These are people who have committed to the board, and we also have a couple ex-board members here who have given blood, sweat, tears, and then just a little bit more of everything they had to this garden. So we appreciate this, we appreciate the opportunity to serve on the west side of Columbus. Please come to our community celebrations, they're a good time, you get to eat great food, and you get to see a community coming together in a way that a lot of people don't think the people on the west side come together. So we appreciate this honor. Thank you.
Here, here, and thank you to all of the board members. Any comments from colleagues?
Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Protem Stenziano. Beth, thank you for your leadership, thank the board, and certainly Peggy, I have known you a long time, and just your commitment to just community guarding in our city is pretty tremendous. And so I've had the opportunity to go to Highland Gardens, and I would just say that the youth garden and that hope that my colleagues will come out in the spring and the summer and just see the wonderful work that goes on there. The partnerships that you have created in this community are tremendous. When you think about a community garden, not as, it's just not about the food that comes out of it, but it also is about, you know, your, it's leadership opportunities for the community, to be able to see seniors working with children, to for children to be able to begin to eat healthy foods and understand where food comes from. It's all of those things that happen there. And so we've been very proud to be able to support the Highland Youth Garden, and just again, I want to say thank you to the leadership of your board. Just really appreciate what you're doing in our community and making a tremendous difference for gardeners to come and learn from you, but for the people that certainly are the children and families that are there. So congratulations on this resolution, and thank you, President Protem Stenziano.
See no other questions or comments? I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Faber, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Protem. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you. I have one resolution and one announcement, and I am going to ask for, for all the individuals who are here, for the tribute to the African-American community event, to please come to the podium, and that's Mr. Pullen, Miss Stacia Clark, and all the mentees to come up towards the podium. This resolution is Resolution Number 0059-X2019. It is to recognize the work, the work of the Tribute to the African-American Community Committee and thank them for their advocacy and outreach to the Central Ohio African-American community. Whereas the Tribute to African-Americans Committee was founded by A.J. Pullen in 2011 as an organization dedicated to uncovering the achievements of African-Americans in this community. Whereas the Tribute to African-American Community provides services to approximately 75 individuals and families each year. These services include mentoring, employment services, financial assistance, and referral services with partner organizations that include the Business Sister Organization, Family and Community Enrichment, IMPACT Columbus Works, the Ohio Health Wellness on Wheels Primary Care, Giggles and Blessings Learning Center, North Central Mental Health, and the Academy for Urban Scholars, and many others. Whereas research has shown that partnerships, relationships with caring mentors offer youth valuable support, guide them toward making positive, healthy life choices. Moreover, mentoring programs offer effective intervention. They prove, they improve student attendance, behavior, and academic performance, and increase high school graduation rates in a significant number of instances culminating into a college attendance. Whereas the Tribute to African-Americans Committee has been mentoring young men and helping younger adults, youth, adults, and families in need. Whereas 90% of the committee's mentees have completed high school and 7% have attended college. Whereas the goal of the Tribute to African-American Committee is to salute and recognize those who are making, who are taking, who are talking change, but to recognize those who are actively making a difference in the community. Whereas each year, the Tribute to African-Americans Committee honors community leaders whose work and achievements align with their goals and mission of this committee. Some of the previous honorees include Bishop Timothy Joseph Clark, Jerry Ravish, Judge Kim Crowcroft, Mike Jackson, John Gregory, Joey Bivens, Michael Bivens, Dee Miller, Al Edmondson, the late Deborah Jackson, Angela Cornelius Dawson, just to name a few. So with that being resolved by the council of the city of Columbus, this council does hereby recognize the work of the Tribute to African-American Committee and to thank them for their advocacy and outreach to the Central Ohio African-American community. I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Faber, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, the floor is yours.
President Harden and councilmembers, thank you, councilmen, sorry, councilwoman Tyson, for the resolution. I just want to share with everyone that our event that is focused on a tribute to African-Americans will take place on February 22nd, 2019, at the Boathouse of Confluence Park Restaurant, located off of Stoddard Road, and it will be held at 7:00 PM. Doors open at 6:00, and it's going to be a wonderful event, people of all ages, from all walks of life. And I'm so excited because I'm personally, I'm a board member, I just joined about four months ago, I'm a secretary of the board, and so far, it's been a wonderful experience for myself.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, and everyone else, want to introduce themselves?
A.J. Pullen, I'm the founder and the director.
Tracy Harris, I am the program assistant.
Israel Dave, and I'm the treasurer.
Thank you. Well, thank you for being here, and just really appreciate the work that you're doing in our community. Are there any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
This Friday at 11:00, in council chambers, we'll be hosting our inaugural Black History Month program. The doors open at 10:30, and we will be honoring Queen Brooks, Catherine Willis, Pastor Leon Troy Senior, Louis Smoot Senior, and James Preston Poindexter, who was our first African-American council member. And so we will be honoring the, giving this award to hit the foundation. And so hopefully you'll come out, there'll be some, we'll have a keynote speaker, there'll be music, and it should be a fun event to learn more about the black history and the individuals who are in our community. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Tonight I have one resolution, and I guess I've only done this one other time, and it was just a couple of weeks ago. One of our colleagues, President Protem Stenziano, this is his last meeting with us, and we have a resolution to honor his service to our community. I see several Stenzianos in the audience, and I would ask them to come forward as we read this resolution. I also see a judge in the audience and a former council member, the Honorable Judge Page. I'd ask her to come forward as well as we read this resolution. We have a resolution, zero, or 60X2019, and it's to honor and recognize and celebrate the contributions of President Protem Michael Stenziano to the citizens of Columbus. I won't read the resolution, but I will say this about public service and about elected office in particular. I think one of the most significant parts of elected office is the basic constituent services, that when a person is in need, that they can pick up the phone and they can call the person that they voted for or not, and get services rendered to them. I have grown up around politics and been around a lot of elected officials. I can say earnestly that I know very few that perform constituent services the way that Michael Stenziano does. This city has been well-served because of his time in elected office, and I have, it's been an honor to, since I've been on council, to serve with President Protem. Are there any comments from my colleagues? President, or Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, President Harden. Councilmember Stenziano, it's been a real honor to serve on council with you. And when I first started this whole journey, and it started with campaigning in 2015, I remember everywhere we went, you were giving your cellphone number out to, even when people didn't ask for it. I really, I really think we should just make the banner of the council Facebook page, like permanently Michael Stenziano's cellphone number. It was, it was so fun to watch. And then his daughter Riley and my daughter Carolyn were in the same class, which was so fun. And I got to see that really it's Cooper and Riley that give Michael his orders and make sure that he's out there in the community representing people well. But it's, it's a, it's, we're really going to miss you, and what you bring to council is a laser-like focus on the individual residents of Columbus and how to serve them best, and that's remarkable. So thank you.
Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Harden. I've had the opportunity to sit next to Michael for the, the time that he's been sitting, been at city council. And I would just say that, I'm certainly going to keep it a little funny here too, but I will certainly miss his, um, his seconds and his, his, you know, making me laugh like sit up because he's being so loud. But, but let me just say this about Michael, I'm just going to say that because it's fun, we always just keep laughing about that. But I'll tell you this, Michael does truly care about public service, and he cares about the residents of this community. He is an individual, they've already mentioned about his constituent services, but he's also someone who definitely does research the issues. And, and often sometimes I know that, you know, he asks a lot of questions, but that's okay because he's asking questions for the benefit of the residents, to be able to provide them, and for this body to provide everyone with all the information. So it really has been, for me, it has been a really a pleasure, you know, to sit next to him and to work with him, because I know that as he moves to his next role to be our auditor, that he will take that same work ethic that he brought to council, to that office, and hopefully improve that office as much as he's helped to improve this body. It's always best to leave a place better than you found it, and I think Michael has absolutely done that. So it's been a great, I've enjoyed working with you, Michael. Thank you.
Michael, it's going to be very interesting. When I first came to council, we had an opportunity to sit and meet and discuss different issues. And we sort of developed the chemistry between he and I, sitting across from each other, whether it was a wink of the eye or a second on a particular piece of legislation, but above all else, the scrutiny that he spent on the different issues. When I would come down to his office or he would come to mine to discuss the issues of intensity and concern, but always with the thought of making things better for the community. Mike, in that regard, undeniably, you'll be missed, and I don't know who I'm going to wink at now, so, I will miss you. And he has a picture of me and Cooper, as he declares is the best high five he's ever seen. So, Mike, again, thank you for all the service, my friend.
Councilmember Remy.
First of all, thank you. It's been an honor and privilege to serve with you. We've known each other for a long time, first as a community leader, and then now is the opportunity to serve with you over the past, I don't do the countdown, but 13 months and some odd days. Appreciate your counsel, your insight, your level of service to council and to the people of Columbus. Certainly going to be big shoes to fill here on council, but know that you're going to make a big impact at your next, in your next assignment as county auditor, and so we look forward to seeing many great things to come. Thank you.
Councilmember Faber.
So this last three weeks or so, yeah. So I have learned the art of seconding, and if you're going to get in there, you cannot double dutch, you just gotta yell it out. And so I can only imagine the rest of the lessons I would have learned had I had more time working with you. But I just want to wish you well, and I look forward to just continuing to follow your public service career. Thank you for your service.
Judge Page, would you like to say anything?
President Harden, President Protem Stenziano, councilmembers Brown, Brown, Faber, Remy, and Tyson, it is a pleasure to join you all this evening, and thank you for welcoming back to City Hall. I didn't want to miss the opportunity just to thank you, President Protem Stenziano, for your service to our city as a resident of the city of Columbus, but I also had the honor and the privilege to sit by you for three years. You probably know the exact days and time, and that was one thing I could never quite keep track of. But as Councilmember Faber said, I learned so much from you, just about serving, hey, Cooper, about serving the city, and really about being an elected official, and also the sacrifices that you make. You spend so much time with the city, and you always have Cooper and Riley with you. And just, really just thank you for being a great father and a great public servant, and I am glad that you will be moving a little closer to the courthouse down the street. So look forward to seeing you soon, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. And Ms. Caroline, I'll give you the final say before we move.
I know, I left my binder at home. No.
Well, let us say first, thank you for sacrifice and service. Being the spouse of an elected official is not an easy task, especially when you have children. And so thank you for your service. We serve together, so.
Thanks. And I think Cooper, Riley, and I would just thank all of you for putting up with Michael and allowing us to share him with you and the city. And I'm amazed that we made it to this meeting here, and we've almost made it through unscathed. But I thank you all, and we're really proud of Michael and excited for this next opportunity. So, thanks. Oh, Cooper, do you want to say something?
No.
Okay. Say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody!
With that, I move for adoption. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Faber, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Resolution adopted. Councilmember, one of the things that we talked about was the community service and community engagement that you provided to our community. We wanted to make sure that we were able to visualize that, and what, and specifically is, in your three years here on council, you held 177 office hours, or coffee hours, around our community. And to memorialize that, we worked with the departments to put together this map showing each one of your the work that you put in, serving each side of our community.
Thank you, Council President Harden, and I really wanna thank everyone in the audience for their understanding of a very fun five-and-three-year-old. They're used to watching us on TV. My mother puts it on, and they always wanna see me recognize them some way, so I'm glad they're able to be here in person. To my colleagues, thank you, it's been an honor. When we had Cooper, the advice we got were the years are long, or sorry, days are long, the years are short. And that's what this time, in my three years, one month, and 11 days on council, has really been, it's a count-up, not a countdown, but really to, it's just been an honor to serve with you all. And I know the passion, the thought, the consideration, day in, day out, we go to. The issues aren't always easy, the discussions aren't always in unison, but really, it's been an honor to be able to sit up here most Mondays, and then see you guys on weekends, and in the evenings, and at area commission meetings, and at lunches, and at other events across the city. As Councilmember Tyson mentioned, I do feel, and particularly that time, we have left the city better than we found it. And I know, and I'm fully confident you will continue to do so. To Judge Page and Councilmember Tyson, I've been spoiled. I've been getting the opportunity to sit between two amazing, intelligent women every day, that put our citizens first, with different passions, different intellect, and they've been great. Councilmember Favor, you're gonna carry that baton very well, and I know you guys are gonna miss my bad jokes, but that will just be unleashed on Cooper and Riley. I do wanna thank the different departments across the board, in particular, really, everyone, all the staff across the city, the employees, it's amazing to see their passion and their commitment to our residents every day. Department of Development's answered a lot of my questions, the Hannahs in particular get tired of my phone calls, but they do call back, the entire Department of Public Service, I don't know division, I haven't asked many, many, many questions of, and so thank you all for your many, many, many responses to the ones that I've had the honor to chair, particularly Department of Neighborhoods, Director William Scott and Todd, Department of Technology, Director Orth, Pam O'Grady, Tom Diamond, Brett Angel, and their constant engagement. And then Public Utilities, Director Davies, Bethan Aubrey, John Lee, and John Ivanic, really appreciated our ability to work together, to come to many hearings when we didn't have as many members in the audience, and then to continue not only educating me, but making sure that we made good use of those taxpayer dollars and commitment to the city. Do you wanna thank the residents of Columbus for this honor and opportunity? A lot of responsibility to be a Mount Councilmember in the city of Columbus, and those that took advantage of calling my cell, 614-219-9224, or came to the community hours, shot us an email, or just thought about council. We really have appreciated the challenges, the thought, and the commitment. It's our residents that make the cities so special, that is abundantly clear as we're out and about away from City Hall. To the city staff, they're the other ones that had to answer all my council staff, my questions. I think Clerk Levens on day one was like, "You ask a lot of questions." But really appreciate her willingness to get me trained up and executed. And then I appreciate the recognition in terms of the community hours. Can't do that without an amazing staff. Was blessed to come in with Stephanie Magus and Kevin McCain. Stephanie moved on, and then Cole Voidach. We've had wonderful interns, but I'm as good as they are. And all those constituent issues, while we'll work in collaboration, Kevin and Cole have been the lead in those three years, one month, 11 days, on working those issues. So really appreciate their commitment and dedication to the businesses and residents of the city of Columbus. With that, I'll wait for my future second and some more bad jokes. Thank you all.
And I see former Councilmember Fran Ryan in the audience as well. Is that Mom too? Yeah, Mom Cinziano as well. With that, are there any comments by our elected officials? Seeing none, any comments by our area commissioners? At this time, I request that the following ordinance be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda, ordinance 0121-2019 in Recreation and Parks. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of ordinances or resolutions from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Cinziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee, ordinance 369, 371, 372, 373, and 376-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances 245, 272, 290, 336-2019. Housing Committee, ordinance 227-2019. Technology Committee, ordinance 299-2019. Public Utilities Committee, ordinances 249, 286, 293, 296, 297, 298, 300, and 314-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have two speakers on the first reading's portion of the agenda. The first speaker is Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins, speaking on ordinance 0227-2019. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council.
1612 Arlington Avenue, resident of 1612 Arlington Avenue. I got several questions for 0227-2019. For the Community Land Trust, I would just like to know more clarification of that. Also, I would like to see more money to, to be allocated for this land trust of $9,925.28, or either $10,925.75. But I'd just would like to have more clarification. What is land trust? Is that taking acquisition, some parcels, properties, whatever, what this looks like? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. I see that the second speaker on the first reading is also speaking on 0227, so I will ask Mr. James Nguyen to come forward as well on this ordinance. Just a reminder, this is for first reading, so the legislation will be officially read and discussed in further detail next week, but I'll ask Director Shoney to give us a quick highlight on 0227. Mr. Nguyen, welcome to council.
Thank you. My name is James Nguyen, I'm a member of the Bread Organization. I live at 2889 Cool Airway here in Columbus, Ohio, and I support the ordinance that's up for the vote. Not having affordable housing available really impacts the members of our community who are struggling to keep a roof over their head. They're spending a disproportionate amount of their income on housing as they strive to find and have a decent place to live. I have myself lived through this affordable housing crisis with my daughter, she saved her money up so she could move out of her house, and gain her independence and live with dignity as a responsible member of the community. She found an apartment in the eastern area, had a safe and clean environment. After living in her apartment for about 10 months, she received a notice that the ownership of her complex had changed, and the new owners would be raising the rent by 30% in her one-bedroom apartment within two months. She could not afford the additional $250 a month increase, the job she was working does not give 30% salary increases, so she was forced to move back to our house. So we, we have a young lady who was trying to live independently, forced to find other housing options due to no fault of her own. My son also struggled to pay his apartment rent in the Kenny Road area, as his rent would be increased every year. We often had to help him as he tried to survive, and really reached the point where he could no longer pay his rent, he also moved back to our house. And we're glad to know, Bread is really glad to know that Mayor Ginther is taking initial steps with the ballot initiative in the land trust. Research shows that more funding is needed to address our housing crisis. When Austin, Texas did a similar bond package, $250 million went to affordable housing. Now Bread has two requests of the city. Number one, encourage developers to set aside new housing units for families that make less than $42,000 a year. Number two, give an additional $5 million per year to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. What would it take for the city to grant these requests? I would be my question.
You yield the balance of your time, Mr. Nguyen?
Excuse me?
Do you yield the balance of your time? You have 30 some seconds left.
Yes.
Thank you. First, Chair Favor, is this something that will be discussed at your hearing on?
Yes, absolutely, and I'm not sure if you're available to come back down here on the 13th, which is Wednesday. This is exactly what the public hearing is for, in order to provide the city of Columbus residents with additional information about the trust, and how it will continue to move forward as we move forward in this process. I can also turn it over to Director Shoney if he would like to add any additional comments at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Harden, members of council. I was pretty much going to say what the council member said in terms of encouraging folks to come on Wednesday at 4:00. This is a new tool that we're using, it's one of many tools that we will be trying to use to address affordable housing in the city, but it's a new concept, it's complex, and so it really deserves more time, and I think is appropriate to use in this forum right now.
Seeing no other speakers on first reading, will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation tonight's agenda, or, I apologize, will the clerk now read the following ordinance that appear on our agenda as consent actions?
Resolutions of Expression 56X and 55X-2019. Finance Committee, ordinances 267, 328, 342, 400, and 404-2019. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance 120 and 341-2019. Public Safety Committee, ordinances 338 and 354-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 2805-2018. Resolution 25X-2019. Ordinances 160, 247, 325, 353, 380, and 401-2019. Administration Committee, ordinances 80, 82, and 243-2019. Housing Committee, ordinance 337, 339, 384, 385, and 386-2019. Technology Committee, ordinance 111-2019. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance 3384-2018. Resolution 35X-2019. Ordinances 149, 194, 212, 225, 253, 256, 295, 324-2019. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 363-2019. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A00, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30-2019.
Seeing no speakers on the consent action portion of the agenda, may I have a motion for the approval of these items as needed as consent? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Remy, Cinziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Consent action portion of the agenda passes. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Liz Brown chairs that committee. Councilmember Flores yours.
Thank you so much, President Harden. Tonight we are considering final passage of the 2019 operating budget through the next three ordinances. As council reviewed the budget proposal put forward by Mayor Ginther, our goal was to create a process that was open, inclusive, and responsive to the needs of our diverse community. I want to thank the mayor and each city department for their work putting forward a budget that is balanced, fiscally sound, and continues vital services for Columbus residents and neighborhoods. Director Lombardi, would you like to add anything on behalf of the administration?
Sure. Thanks, President Harden, Chairperson Brown, and other council members. The 2019 budget that was submitted by Mayor Ginther reflects his priorities for neighborhoods, safety and health, quality, early childhood education, infant mortality, and economic development. Also included in that budget was a deposit to the rainy day fund, which will put us closer to the goal that council, the auditor, and the mayor set for 80 million by the end of 2020. I do wanna thank my colleagues and their staff for everything that they've done to help us put this together, and I also wanna thank you for your leadership as the Chair of Finance.
Thank you, Director. Since the time the budget was proposed, city council held nine hearings to review and receive public feedback. We also engaged in an unprecedented level of outreach and conversations with residents throughout the city over the last year. I wanna thank Erin Gibbons and the whole community engagement office for spearheading those efforts, which amounted to 106 community meetings and neighborhood hearings. And more than, is that? Hello? Okay. Uh-oh. It amounted to 106 community meetings and neighborhood hearings, and more than 1,000 hours of conversation. Based on this engagement, we made $3.3 million in amendments to the $912 million introduced budget. These amendments complement the mayor's proposal and priorities, and they further align it with council's three main priorities, as heard from residents: strong neighborhoods, good-paying jobs, and pathways out of poverty. Each member of this council championed funding, and I would like to highlight a few amendments I advocated for inclusion, and also provide time for them to do the same at their discretion. We are adding $100,000 to halt evictions in a newly established eviction prevention fund. This is a priority for every member of council, because stable housing is one of the foundations for economic security. We're also continuing another year of helping pregnant women who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. Recent studies have shown that the stresses of homelessness are strongly predictive of preterm birth and low birth weight, even more so than smoking and substance abuse. This partnership with Moms2Be and the Community Shelter Board has already led to multiple healthy birth outcomes in the last year, and we're proud to help the partnership continue. Many of these amendments are building upon priorities of the proposed budget. I'm grateful to Mayor Ginther for his commitment that Columbus will lead the nation in support for children ages birth to five. That's why in these amendments, we're also expanding an early childhood education study from the Hilltop to the entire city. If we are truly to tackle low access to high-quality early education, we must first also understand the full scale of the problem we're solving. Are there any additional comments on amendments or the overall budget for my colleagues? We do have one speaker. Okay. I'd like to call up Michael Corey. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Corey. Please state your name and affiliation, and you have three minutes.
Distinguished members of city council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Michael Corey, and I serve as Executive Director of the Human Service Chamber of Franklin County. As you know, we represent about 70 nonprofit organizations, excuse me, in our community that are providing critical services in housing, healthcare, education, childcare, refugee and immigration services, food access, workforce, and much more to hundreds of thousands of people in Franklin, excuse me, in Franklin County. Their work is hard, even with an economy that has been growing here and nationally. The needs our agencies are trying to meet continue to escalate. This body is well aware of the breadth and depth of the challenges that persist, and we appreciate the work you and your colleagues do in addressing these many challenges. Indeed, our sector is certainly aware of the difficult task of allocating all the funding this city would like to provide in addressing those needs. In other words, I am here to say thank you for your continued financial support of the human services sector, including the city's funding of 24 of our member agencies during this upcoming grant period. The roughly $5 million the city of Columbus has allocated is tremendously important, and yet, the surge of asks for this grant cycle, from $14 million during the last grant cycle to $20 million this cycle, underscores the need for everyone from our civic and business leaders to the very people... I'm just bad luck, that happens because I'm here. Excuse me. Underscores the need from everyone, from our business and civic leaders to the very people who benefit from the services our agencies... who benefit from the services our agencies provide to find more and new ways to support the human services sector at this critical time in our country. We pledge to continue working for our members whose impactful work won grants this year and to continue working for our members whose important work did not receive funding this time around. And we pledge, of course, to continue working with this body and any other to help our agencies meet the great needs of this great community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Corey. I appreciate you coming down and commenting, and I know that in relation to the emergency human services funding, I assume you're in contact with Health and Human Services Chair, Priscilla Tyson. Councilmembers, is there anything that you want to add?
Thank you, Chair Brown. Certainly, Michael coming down this evening is really indicative of what the issue is here. Certainly, as he heard that about 22 organizations are being funded and that could be funded in this budget. And he mentioned, well, I'll just go back. So the history of this is that four years ago, when we had a competitive process, there were $13 million worth of asks, and we had $5 million. In this process, we have $20 million of asks for the same $5 million. It is very, it's concerning to me as a Chair of Health and Human Services. It was concerning before the competitive process, and it's concerning to me right now. When you realize that when we talk about a third of the individuals in our community are in need of support, and we, there isn't an ability to increase the amount of money, we've got to do something different. We've got to do something different. Because even this particular grant cycle, it was for individuals to apply that would be, that the focus was economic stability. So if you think about just that portion, then there are the other needs that are, the other human service needs that are not directly tied to economic stability but are important to this community. Examples like, which we talked about last week, our Columbus Cancer Clinic that supports individuals who don't have resources if they are now diagnosed with a disease. A program that delivers meals to individuals under 60 years old, because you don't get the meals, if you're over 60, you can get the meals from life care, but you don't get them if you're under 60. And so I certainly have had a conversation with development, and I also have had a conversation with the mayor. And I think that we are going to have to have conversations. I've had Michael, with, I think, the commissioners, because we do have an issue in this community. And as I've said, that, you know, the Bible says the poor would be, the poor will be with you always. However, we have a responsibility to still take care of the poor. And so we, I just want this, I mean, this is, this budget is, you know, I appreciate the hard work on the budget, and this is, you know, and the $5 million that will be there, but we do have to. This is just a conversation, because it spreads in the room, and they're saying we want to focus on affordable housing, and I appreciate that. But there are other issues in this community that go along with affordable. If people need affordable housing, they also need these other services. They go hand in hand. They go hand in hand. And so we have got to do something about it. The needs aren't getting any less, they're getting greater, just by the sheer number. And so we have to decide, as a community, what are we going to do? Because we have, we're finding resources for some other areas that are very important to the community. But we've got to find, we've got to find resources for individuals that are in need of services. So I thank you for your leadership. I certainly have been asking about making sure that we are having advocacy and talking to, I think the commissioners is going to be one group of people to have a conversation with, because we need more. We definitely have a need for services. So everyone that applied for those dollars are doing good work. These are amazing nonprofits that we have in this community, but we lack the resources. So that means it is a challenge for us. It's a challenge already. We've all gotten phone calls today, and it is a challenge. But the bigger challenge is, we don't have enough resources. That's the deal. We don't have enough money. And as a community, what are we prepared to do about it? So I'm committed to certainly having those conversations with the appropriate people because if we can figure out, we're a community that says, you know, we always come together on big initiatives. This is a huge initiative that we've got to come together on, because it's not getting any better. So you hear the passion in my voice, because I can appreciate all the other great things that we're doing, but we're leaving a third of the people behind. And we can't, and we may leave them behind in some areas, but we've got to provide services to them. So with that, I'm glad you're here, Michael. I appreciate what you're doing with this budget, Councilmember Brown, but I hope my colleagues, where we can all work together to figure out, how do we help our community move forward? And $5 million is just not enough money to do it. Thank you.
So, yes, and as Chair of Health and Human Services, I know that this conversation, you will continue this conversation, and we will be separately considering the EHS funding as submitted by the administration. So thank you for the charge going forward.
And thank you, Councilmember Brown. I mean, it's just, whatever we do, we just don't have enough money. That is, that is the bottom line. Whatever we do, we don't have enough emergency money to do it, we just don't have enough. So we've got to figure this thing out.
All right. Thank you.
We've got to figure it out. Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Corey, for your advocacy in coming down. Are there any other comments or questions from colleagues? Okay. We are going to move through the three ordinances relating to the budget. Ordinance 2870-2018, to make appropriations for the 12 months ending December 31, 2019, for each of the several object classes for which the City of Columbus has to provide from the monies known to be in the treasury of said City of Columbus in the fund known as the general fund. During the said 12 months, from the collection of all taxes and from other sources of revenue, the amount of $912 million, and to declare an emergency. I would first like to move to remove from the table.
Sir?
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Removed.
I move for passage as amended.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance 2871-2018, to make appropriations and transfers for the 12 months ending December 31, 2019, for other funds for various divisions, to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary and to declare an emergency. I first move to remove from the table.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Removed.
I move for passage as amended.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Ordinance 2872-2018, to make appropriations for the 12 months ending December 31, 2019, for selected other funds for various divisions, to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary and to declare an emergency. I move to remove from the table.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Removed.
I move for passage as, just passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And next in finance, we have ordinance 0167-2018, to establish a new authorized strength ordinance for various divisions in the City of Columbus to be consistent with the adopted 2019 budget, to repeal ordinance 3134-2018, and to declare an emergency. As stated in the title, this ordinance aligns current authorized strength levels for city departments with the 2019 operating budget. Emergency action is being considered to prevent delays in filling vacant positions. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. I have one ordinance from consent in Recreation and Parks. Ordinance 02, may I move to that?
Please.
Councilmember, or Council President? Thank you. Ordinance 0121-2019, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with DWA Recreation Incorporated for the supply and installation of new playgrounds at Castopark, Stone Ridge Park, Madison Mills Park, and North Crest Park, to authorize the expenditure of $303,000, $303,527, $303,527.99, excuse me, from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Recreation and Parks Department provides many important services to our city, but when you think about Recreation and Parks, one of the simplest and no less important functions they serve is providing a fun and safe place for our children to play. That is why I'm excited to bring this ordinance forward, to provide funding for the replacement of playgrounds at four of our parks, which we do fairly regularly, I think, on an annual basis. The new playgrounds will meet or exceed all current safety and accessibility standards and will fully replace equipment that is more than 22 years old. Any questions from colleagues? I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
And then before we move on, I just wanted to dwell a moment on our parks and playgrounds relating to this ordinance. As a parent of a three-year-old and a 10-month-old, some of the best memories that my husband and I will carry into our old age will be moments on the playground. The first time we saw our daughter giggle on a swing, her 100th trip down a slide, and even the countless boo-boos. But what also happens more times than I can count when our family is out together is that I end up having meetings on the fly, either prearranged to fit into busy schedules or with a resident I've met by happenstance. And this got me thinking, I should make this a thing. So this year, I'm launching new community office hours, my own version, called Meet Me at the Playground, which will occur at various parks across the city. You don't have to have a child to come by and chat, but if you do, and you're constantly trying to find time to parent, work, and advocate for your community all at once, maybe we can help you kill two birds with one stone. My first community hours will be at the Carriage Place Community Center on Saturday, March 23rd, from 1:30 to 2:30. They have a wonderful outdoor space that I'm hoping weather will allow us to use, but if not, we will set up inside the center. My second community hours will be at Maloney Park on Saturday, April 27th, from 1:30 to 2:30. We'll continue to announce office hours throughout the year, and we'll continue to send reminders. I hope to see everyone at the playground. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chair Brown. If you don't mind, I'm going to go a little bit out of order and move to the Judiciary Committee, which Councilmember Faber chairs. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Judiciary and the Court Administration Committee, we have ordinance number 0377-2019, to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the lawsuit case of Teresa Berry versus James P.O. Grady et al., pending before the United States District Court for the Southern District of Ohio, Eastern Division, to authorize the transfer and the expenditure of $140,000 in the general fund for payment of the settlement and to declare an emergency. At this point in time, I would like to call upon city, Assistant City Attorney, excuse me, City Solicitor General Laura Baker-Morsh to explain the ordinance in further detail.
Thank you, Councilmember Faber. The city attorney's office provided representation in this case. This case was filed back in 2014. We did have success throughout various stages of the litigation, but the reality is, at this particular point, we are looking at heading into the fifth year of litigation. Given the particular, at a trial, it's always unpredictable. We'd be looking at attorney's fees, which as of 2017, at that point in time, were estimated to be over $185,000. We do feel that resolving this particular case in the manner that we have recommended to council would be in the best interest of the city.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Faber. In a situation like this, that I'm certainly we're paying with city dollars, but is there ever any, do you know if this judge is up for any disciplinary counsel of all, at all?
Councilmember Tyson, I am not familiar with the status of what disciplinary action, if any, may have been taken. I can say that resolution in this case is not, not a recognition of liability in resolving this matter.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, I would ask to move for passage and request a voice vote.
Second.
Call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
It passes.
Thank you. That's all we have in the Judiciary and Court Administration Committee.
Thank you, Chair Faber. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Mitch Brown chairs that committee. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, I have ordinance 0332-2019, to authorize the Director, Director of the Public Safety to contract with Franklin County Board of Commissioners and expend funds for the use of the Franklin County Corrections Centers for the housing of City of Columbus prisoners, to authorize the expenditure of $4,600,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. I would like to ask Assistant Director Collins to provide a brief history on the housing costs for prisoners and the steps being taken to reduce these costs. Director Collins?
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Brown, council members. The city entered into a contract with the county commissioners in 1994 for the housing of prisoners, since the city does not have a jail. Since then, there have been periodic increases in the per diem rate, resulting in the $3 increase this year per housing of a prisoner per day, per night. The city has also looked at and been involved in some initiatives to try to reduce the amount of days that people are spending in jail. One, and for instance, is we used part of our Justice Assistance Grant and joined with the county this year to do a pilot project with the clerk's office to remind people the night before they have court that they have court the next day, with the hopes that it would cut down on the number of warrants that had to be filed for no-shows at court. In addition, we are also carefully following bail reform that has been proposed to the Franklin County Criminal Justice Planning Board to see if that can also reduce some days in court, or in, in the jail.
Any comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy Stenziano Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
President Harden may have authority to move to rules and references.
Please.
Thank you, sir. Ordinance 0379-2019, to amend Chapter 145 of Columbus City Code to provide the Director of Public Safety the authority to create and enforce the rules of this chapter and revise for the contracting and discretionary review of the amount of city pays for funeral directors for the burial or cremation of indigent persons and to declare an emergency. Again, Assistant Director Collins, please provide an overview of the indigent burial program, please.
Thank you, Council President Harden, Chair Brown, and other council members. The Department of Public Safety is responsible for taking care of final arrangements for a Columbus resident that is considered indigent when there are no other options to take care of the remains. For the first time, the city decided to streamline the process and allow for a standardized process, creating more efficiency within it. The department wrote an RFP to invite offers to submit proposals to handle indigent persons who come through the Franklin County Coroner's Office. After a process, including scoring, the submissions, and presentations, the city is in the process of finalizing a contract with the vendor who will handle all of those cases, and you will see that on your agenda in two weeks. The department did not want to have a cost amount in code, so the department is asking, respectfully asking council to amend Chapter 145 to allow the Director of Public Safety to set the amount paid for each case. Other vendors will be allowed to apply for the cost of indigent cremation or burial, but only at the cost determined by the Director of Public Safety. We're also asking for an emergency clause on this, due to the fact that we would like to have this contract in place by March 1st and begin saving the city some money.
Councilwoman Tyson?
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair Brown. So what? So what is the—like, is there an average amount that we're paying? And just provide us—could you just provide some more information around how this program works? That would be helpful.
Yes, ma'am. This—per state code, the city has to do this. In city code, it currently is $750. So when an application is made, the city is paying $750 to a funeral home minus any assets that can be found. If the deceased has $5 in their pocket, that comes off the $750. So it's a wide range. The contract that we're running into is a flat fee, unless they find some additional assets, but it'll be a flat fee, and will be easier to budget. Unfortunately, over the past few years, we've had to—we've gone over budget or we've increased our budget for the number of indigent burials. We actually believe part of this is a result of the opiate epidemic here in central Ohio.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just my last question, and so approximately, how many indigent burials are we—have we been paying for?
I don't have the exact figures in front of me, and I'll be glad to get those to you, but I know that they—it's—it's gone up exponentially to well over 100. So I know we've budgeted $120,000 in the past, and if you divide that by 750—and I would tell you that here in a minute because my math isn't that good—but that'll give you some idea of how many we've done.
Thank you.
Any other questions from my colleagues? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden, and Councilwoman Tyson will make sure the information is provided to you regarding your request.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee to come before counsel is the Public Service Committee. Councilmember Remy chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Harden. Tonight, I have ordinance number 333-2019, to amend the 2018 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to waive the formal bidding requirements of Columbus City Code, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a professional services contract with EMHNT for the Nationwide Boulevard and Hocking Street Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $49,000 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to pay for this contract, and to declare an emergency. I'd like to turn this over to Deputy Director Kelly Skakow to further explain why we're waiving the bidding requirements.
Mr. Chairman, President Harden, and members of council, good evening. Deputy Director Kelly Skakow, on behalf of Director Gallagher. The engineering firm of EMHNT previously had designed this roadway as part of a contract with nationwide realty investors. The roadway design now needs to be modified to accommodate new development. Since EMHNT did the previous work, it was deemed to be more cost and time efficient to enter to a new—into an agreement for them to modify the design as opposed to switching consultants. Mr. Chairman, President Harden, and members of council, the department respectfully requests this bid waiver and council approval for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you very much. Next, I have ordinance number 378-2019, to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grant Fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $94,356 from the Federal Transportation Grant Fund for the intersection improvements Refugee Road and Winchester Pike Project, and to declare an emergency. Ordinance number 2473-2017, authorize the Director of Public Service to submit applications and execute project agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation for Highway Safety Program funds. As a result of these applications, the Department of Public Service has been awarded HSP grant funding for the intersection improvements at Refugee Road and Winchester Pike application. The intersection is ranked by the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission as its number 16 on its top 100 crash intersections. Plan improvements for this intersection include modifying the clearance intervals and optimizing signal timings, changing the Refugee Road left-turn phases to protected-only, improving signal head visibility by constructing mast arms and installing backplates, narrowing the northwest approach to Two Lanes just south of the Burger King driveway, providing pedestrian accommodations at the intersection, and improving pavement marking visibility by restriping existing pavement markings. The HSP grant funding will provide up to $94,356 in design funding for the intersection improvements work at Refugee Road and Winchester Pike. This grant funding requires a 10% local match of up to $9,435.60. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you very much. That's all I have in Public Service and Transportation. With your permission, President Harden, I'd like to move into administration.
Please.
This evening, I have ordinance number 81-2019, to authorize the Director of Human Resources Department to enter into contract with Mount Carmel Health Systems for testing services for the Division of Police and Fire for the provisions of health and physical fitness programs, to authorize the expenditure of $1,176,624 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of Human Resources to enter into contract with Mount Carmel Health Systems for health and physical fitness testing services for the divisions of Police and Fire in the amount of $1,176,624. The Division of Police portion totals $224,000, and the Division of Fire portion totals $952,624. This ordinance represents the third of a five-year contract from March 1st, 2019, to February 29th, 2020. Following the fifth year, the contract allows for three one-year extensions if all parties are in agreement. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you very much. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee to come before counsel is the Neighborhoods Committee.
Thank you, President Harden. Before I do Neighborhoods, though, I was told Director Orth had brief comments to make, so I'm going to let the Director, Trump, go.
President Harden—
Sure.
—President Protend Stenziano, members of council, just wanted to express our appreciation to Mr. Stenziano for his leadership as the Chair of the Technology Council. He's been a true supporter of technology here in the city, and just wanted to wish him well in his future endeavors as county auditor.
That's very nice.
I appreciate that, Director, considering you don't have to answer any more of my questions for the next council meeting. Tonight, in Neighborhoods, bring forward ordinance 499-2019, to authorize Columbus City Council to enter into a grant agreement with the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging and Support of Senior Housing Stabilization, to authorize an appropriation expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund and declare an emergency. In our recent Housing Stabilization Roundtables hosted by council in partnership with Age-Friendly Columbus, there have been many concerns and challenges shared by older residents in our community regarding their ability to age in place or the ability to age in the right place. In line with the Housing Stabilization Report, as well as the Age-Friendly Columbus Strategic Plan, this ordinance will provide $18,270 to support preventative efforts to reduce eviction, displacement, and homelessness of four Columbuses' older adults. The focus is diversion, which is keeping older adults out of the shelter, as well as prevention to keeping their homes from reaching a crisis state. The funding would support preventative measures for homelessness for Columbus residents 15 and older. The Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging has staff working daily on supporting older adults through housing crises. With staffing already in place, these funds would directly impact needs such as a missed rent or mortgage, rent or utility deposit, housing violation, moving expenses, or other hardships related to maintaining safe housing that can lead to displacement. The experts working with these older adults would utilize the fund only as needed, pairing it with other resources and support in our community. I'd like to everyone to help make the senior—the senior event roundtables happen and for my colleagues' support for this fund. This is a great example of tangible results that community conversations can result. We had residents on the Near East Side come to Community Hour and raise this concern, and so really appreciate your all's support with this ordinance. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
By voice vote. Please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Stenziano?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. The ordinance passes.
So I'll have Neighborhoods, move on to Public Utilities.
Please.
Tonight, Public Utilities bring forward ordinance 209-2019, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a construction contract with 2K General Company for the Home Road Property Demolition Project in amount of up to $4,457,640, to provide for payment of prevailing wage services to the Department of Public Service in the amount of up to $2,000, and to authorize an expenditure of up to $4,459,640 within the Water General Obligation Bonds Fund for the Division of Water. Work consists of the demolition of 19 buildings on the former Sciota Juvenile Correction Facilities and Concord Township Fire Station, which includes the removal of asbestos materials within buildings, steam tunnels, and buried steam lines. The project also includes the demolition of a former wastewater treatment plant. Management of existing trees on the site will be performed in accordance with the city's tree protection and mitigation policy. Majority of structures will not be reused by the city and was deemed appropriate to demolish to reduce property operation and maintenance costs. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
All we have in Utilities, I have one in Rules.
Please.
Tonight in Rules, and my final ordinance, 0329-2019, to amend various sections of Title 11 of the Columbus City Codes to add definitions of rate classes to clarify service charges during water shut-offs, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to replace water meters, and to enact new sections relating to charges during termination. To be clear, there are no rate adjustments as part of this ordinance. We had it on first read last Monday, February 4th, and a public hearing was held Wednesday, February 6th, which residents can view on our council YouTube page. To summarize, the code changes briefly, amends section four—or amends four sections and creates two others. It defines commodity charge, consecutive charge, service charge, and billing charge. Again, none of these are new charges, just being codified. It does authorize the Director to replace water meters, and it codifies water and sewer service charges during water termination. Do want to thank the Director, and Mr. Lee in particular, for his presentation, and again, your willingness to answer all of my questions. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, and well done, Chairman, Mr. Chairman. The final committee to come before counsel before zoning, if we can do—is the Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. The first ordinance I have is ordinance 0179-2019, and I'm going to ask for Rick Davis to please walk towards the podium. He is Executive Vice President, COO for Lutheran Social Services. It's to amend the 2018 capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to execute a contract modification with Lutheran Social Services of Central Ohio to provide additional funding for the costs associated with the construction of a new shelter for the survivors of domestic violence, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the Development taxable Bond Fund, and to authorize the Director of Development to expend $500,000 from the Development taxable Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. Mr. Davis, can you please share the usage of this $500,000 and give us an update on our new facility? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. January 14th was a very proud day for Lutheran Social Services Choices in the City of Columbus. That was the day that we finally moved in the new domestic violence shelter here in Columbus. And I just—I want to thank council, because we clearly could not have done this without you all. This was really a team effort, and if you could have seen the tears of joy in the eyes of the clients and in the eyes of the staff that dealt with a very overcrowded building, I think most council members have visited the former site, it was a very emotional day for us and a very proud day for the city of Columbus. As you know, the Choices Shelter is the only facility of its type in Columbus for those that are fleeing domestic violence situations, so very important part of what we do here in this—in the city. One in three females in their lifetime will experience some type of domestic violence situation. It's the number-one call that our police department and law enforcement has throughout the communities here in Central Ohio. We completed the project, I'm proud to say, pretty much on time and on budget, and it's a result of a great team effort among the various developers. The project was a $16.7 million—or, I'm sorry, a $10.7 million project, and last year, the City of Columbus pledged $1 million towards this project. $500,000 of it was received and it went towards the acquisition of the property and the sanitary sewer line, and we come to you today asking for the remaining $500,000 to be placed towards the overall construction costs for the—for the project. As I said a couple times now, the community should be very proud of what we were able to do together, and I thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, and certainly thank you and your team for the work that you do to make sure families can have a safe environment after they're living a domestic violence situation, and also very pleased—I know sometimes women don't—women or families don't want to leave their present homes because of—they don't want to leave their—their pets, and that you have—and this facility has a place for the pets to be there also. So thank you for your leadership and having a great facility and organization for individuals to be able to come and move forward with their lives.
Honored to serve the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions about my colleagues? For my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mr. John Tolbert, Chief Communication Services Officer for Primary One Health, to walk towards the podium, please. This ordinance is ordinance number 0319-2019, to authorize and direct the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Columbus Neighborhood Health Centers Incorporated doing business as Primary One Health to provide primary healthcare and dental services at community-based centers, to authorize expenditure of $4,299,110 from the Health—excuse me—the Health Special Revenue Fund, and to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. Mr. Tolbert will give us a brief presentation of the services that Primary One offers to our community, and Mr. Tolbert, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Good evening, President Harden and council members. I'm John Tolbert, and I'm the Director of Community Services at Primary One Health. And I want to just basically give you a brief overview of the services that we provide in the community based upon the funding that the city allows us to have, in part with the other funding that we get from the federal government. And to be frank, in terms of like what we do, we provide services to individuals who normally wouldn't have access to healthcare, and we do that from the standpoint of offering them access to healthcare at 10 locations in Columbus and one in Circleville. So I'm going to briefly go through this because I know we don't have time, and I don't know which way I'm pointing, which way does this go? I got it. I got you. I got you. So we've expanded our healthcare services in the operatories and exam rooms at our East 17th Avenue location, which is at St. Stevens and Linden area, and to provide more primary care to OB-GYN and access through our centering pregnancy program, and transportation to those women to that program to reduce infant deaths and increase access for moms. The transportation is possible from the assistance of a grant we received from the city. Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson, for that. And we use that to bring the ladies to the services that we offer at that site. So one of the things that we talk about in terms of using money for—I'm going to go with this—I don't need this—we talk about trying to increase the services to many members of the community. For example, we increased the Medication-Assisted Treatment Program and Behavioral Health Services through HERSA, and our Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services with funding to address opioid and substance abuse, mental health services throughout the Columbus and Franklin County area. We increased partnerships to address social determinants of health, and we do that by having food prescriptions, produce giveaways for the community. We did the Stuff the Backpack for 52,000 students in the Columbus Public School System. We expanded our 340B prescription drug discount program to save our patients money and provide resources to Primary One Health and to provide services to more patients. That's an increase in terms of the number of people that we assisted with the drug discount program of 4% over last year. Those are individuals who take advantage of the program, end up saving a lot of money on their prescriptions and medications when they purchase it. Our partnerships—we have a number of partnerships that we have in the community. Columbus Public Health is one, is a huge, huge partnership that we have with them, and we have had it for years, thanks to Dr. Robertson, her staff. We currently serve 47,000 patients in Columbus, and we had last year 168,000 visits of patients who visited our sites. We appreciate the funding from the city, and we know that those persons that are in the community who still have no insurance and little access to healthcare, and we also know that the community has provided—Primary One Health has provided primary care in 2018 to 19,000 patients who received uncompensated care, meaning that they had no insurance, no ability to pay for the— no insurance, no ability to pay for their care, and that amounted to around $8 million. So we'll continue to serve and provide access to primary care to all of our populations that are invulnerable populations, and include those who are homeless as well. We have our Health Care for the Homeless program that has existed for a number of years, where we provide health care to all of the homeless population, whether they're in the shelter or out on the land, and we do that on a daily basis. I've passed out to you our annual report, a copy of the slide presentation, and we just know that from the standpoint of like what needs to be done in the community, we couldn't do it without the partnership that we have of many other agencies in the community, and the help that we receive from the city, that we've received from the city for a long time, and we truly, truly appreciate it, because everybody knows that without your health, you can't do a lot of things. And to your point, Councilwoman Tyson, there's never enough money, but we seem to believe that there's always enough care. People who care enough about people to guide them toward the resources that are available in the community truly makes a difference. So I want to thank all of you for the opportunity to present to you and the appreciation that we have for the funding that we receive from the city, and hope it will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tolbert, for coming down, and certainly we do appreciate the partnership that we have with Primary One Health, and as you just mentioned, the one point, the uncompensated care, and in 2018, you saw 18,000 individuals, that was receiving, receiving care, and, and that amounts to $8 million. So just really appreciate your work, and for individuals who are viewing or listening to this, this part of our hearing this evening, certainly can you share a phone number if people were in need of care?
Sure.
So that they can come and utilize the services that, should we pass this information to this agenda tonight?
Sure. It's 645-5500, 645-5500. We also have a website, primaryonehealth.org. You can go there and see all of the services and the locations that we have available to you. Our hours of operation are on our website as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Mitchell Brown.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. John, again, you just already answered the question, the hours of operation at all the different locations, are they the same?
Yes, uh-huh.
Thank you.
We even now have Saturday hours.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you very much, and again, they provide mental health, behavioral, behavioral health care, cardiology, dental, family medicine, health care for the homeless, internal medicine, obstetrics, they have pediatric, they have a clinical pharmacy, physical therapy, substance use disorders, and they certainly have transportation and interpreters, and women's, women's health at OBGYNs and vision. So thank you, you're a great partner for the city of Columbus, and just appreciate your work.
Appreciate you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. There are no questions or comments, my colleagues, after I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Past.
Thank you. And the last ordinance I have this evening is to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with AIDS Healthcare Foundation for the provision of HIV testing and screening services for the period January 1st of 2019 through December 31st of 2019, and to authorize expenditure of $70,000 from the Health Department's grants fund and to pay costs thereof and to declare an emergency, and this is ordinance 0366-2019. This contract with AIDS Healthcare Foundation for HIV testing and screening services to persons at the highest risk of HIV infection at the out-of-the-closet and other community-based testing sites. All negatives that are at the highest risk of HIV will be referred to PrEP, and all HIV-positive cases shall be referred to medical care, as well as Columbus Public Health Prevention Services. Approximately 1,000 persons at risk for HIV will be screened and tested for HIV. In addition to this, excuse me, in addition to this ordinance, legislation was also passed in the consent agenda this evening to provide $216,840 to equitize health, to provide health education and risk reduction services related also to HIV. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Past.
Thank you. That's all I have in this committee this evening.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. Before I get a motion to adjourn, also, I failed to recognize Judge Barrows, who has been with us through the meeting. Thank you so much for joining us, Judge.
Thank you, Council President Harden.
Yes, sir. May I get a motion to adjourn, meeting number seven, please?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We will take, we will have zoning momentarily. Regular meeting number eight will now come to order. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, favor, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. All members serve on the committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. As I begin the zoning agenda, if there are, before beginning the zoning agenda, I will briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents, three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer. I will.
I will.
Thank you. All right. So the first ordinance is 0315-2019, to grant a variance from provisions of Sections 33, 32.03, R1 Residential District of the Columbus City Codes, for the property located at 2450 Walcut Road, to permit multi-unit residential development in the R1 Residential District. The applicant is Woda Cooper Companies, care of Dave Perry. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission. I will now ask for staff presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The site is comprised of three parcels, each developed with a single-unit dwelling in the R1 Residential District. The requested variance would permit redevelopment of the site with two 32-unit apartment buildings for a total of 64 units. A council variance is necessary because the R1 District lists single-unit dwellings as the only permitted residential use. The site is within the boundaries of the Trabee-Roberts Area Plan, which recommends neighborhood commercial land uses at this location. Staff recognizes that this site is located on, on a primary corridor, and that the revised site plan included a concept for a comprehensive redevelopment strategy for the entire block as requested by staff. The site plan represents a high level of design and is consistent with the plan's design guidelines. Staff believes that multi-unit residential development of this density should be rezoned to an appropriate apartment residential zoning district and afforded the full review process applicable to zoning applications, including a public hearing and review by the Development Commission. For this reason, this ordinance is conditioned on a follow-up rezoning to an appropriate zoning designation within one year of its effective date, but city department's recommendation is for approval.
Thank you. And now I will ask for a presentation by the applicant, Mr. Joel McCabe. Good evening. Please state your name and who you represent.
Joseph McCabe, Woda Cooper Company is also a resident of the city of Columbus. Good evening, councilmembers, Councilmember Tyson, President Harden. Thank you for having us here this evening. Both this and a subsequent variance request also on your agenda this evening really reflect some of the tones that we've heard here this evening. We've heard a lot from a lot of different folks about the need for affordable housing, a crisis that we have that's just out there lying that needs a solution quick. We need more housing. Folks like the Bread Organization elaborated a bit about housing and its shortage and the need for more, more housing of its type. We've heard from Councilmember Tyson earlier, the need for wraparound services. Wraparound services are one of the crucial things that come with affordable housing and workforce housing. We heard from Councilman Stenziano about the importance of aging in place. Our housing already is integrated or has incorporated in it, within it, as a requirement, the ability to age in place. All these types of things make affordable housing that we do here in the year 2018, 2019, a success, because it's built, it's built to such a substantial higher quality than its market rate equals. We submitted a pair of sites to encompass 118 total units, which is sort of small when you really compare it to a lot of the similar development that's happening around it. Back in November, we were able to make a community presentation at the Hilliard Elementary School to the Far West Task Force and its future area commission, and worked closely with people like Melissa Green and Erin Gibbons, both who were on hand from the city to see, hear, facilitate comments, bring things back to us. We did receive a loan letter, which we were able to address some of those comments right within the context of the meeting itself, and we were able to take feedback from the residents that night and incorporate it into the plan, including some revisions to the site plan, addressing moving the buildings further east, and make other changes within the project itself. We worked closely with city staff following that submission, our initial submission as well, to address a lot of their comments regarding traffic, open green space, providing play spaces, and fitness spaces outside of the building proper itself for the residents there to be successful. While underlying themes sometimes in that community talks a little bit about some of the troubled traffic roadways around there, one of the things that became obvious to us is selecting this spot for valuable workforce housing is the fact it's so easily linked to its community around it. There are existing bikeways and dedicated bike lanes directly in Roberts Road that are actually striped out for bicycles. There are concrete sidewalks that run east, west, north, south, from Roberts and along Roberts. Crucially, what is, is almost right across the street from it and around it, are a list of manufacturing and light industry job sector businesses that are planning on expanding or have recently expanded. You may recall that Kimball Midwest added and expanded its business. UPS is on the docket with economic development to expand its distribution center and add a number of jobs. Ball Metal Container, Terrier Foods, at least a dozen intermodal logistics firms are represented just within footsteps of this site. And as we think about the outer belt traffic that's out there, and the types of jobs that are in these facilities, we need to put housing where it makes sense. We need to put people closer to places they can walk to that they call their job, especially if those jobs are lower-paying. That campus around there is estimated to contain about 12,000 jobs, so it's very important to know that. However, our project just represents 0.9% of the actual demand, not even 1% of the demand for this type of housing will be met with workforce housing. The workforce housing we've pledged will actually address up to 80% AMI, households up to and including $42,000 to $61,000 a year incomes, and all the way through the spectrum down to about 30% AMI. It is crucial to see that this type of housing is built in a place where it makes sense, close in proximity to a number of jobs. Thank you. I'll take questions as well.
Any questions? No. Thank you for that presentation. We have two speakers for this ordinance, and the first speaker is Monica, is it, Burning? And she is in support. Please come state your name and who you represent.
Sure. My name is Monica Burning. I live on Nike Drive approximately one and a half miles from the proposed development, so this is my neighborhood. I live there, I shop there. I am in favor of the proposed development, because I feel that it provides needed affordable housing for young professionals. Many young professionals coming right out of school cannot afford to live downtown, but this location gives a great connection, as Mr. McCabe said, to downtown, as well as the surrounding west-side businesses, and it will allow us to bring in a good influx of young people to keep the neighborhood vibrant. Additionally, I think that all of the residential developments in the area, and there are a number of them, they support local restaurants and businesses within that area, but I've noticed recently, in the past year or two, a closing of some businesses, such as the Frishe's Restaurant, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, the Giant Eagle that were along Hilliard Rome Road, and I see that this, bringing in additional residential facilities and residents will support my local community much better than it's currently occurring. I also feel that compared to the density of some of the other neighborhood developments going in, particularly the development next to the Silver Horn Center where the Kroger is, it's a very large, massive, almost overwhelming development, and looking at the plans that is proposed by the Woda Cooper Companies, I feel that this project is much better relative to the scale of the area, and I think that the density is appropriate for the site. That's essentially what I have to say. Right?
Thank you, Ms. Burning. I don't have any questions. Thank you for coming down. Any questions for her? Thank you. And our final speaker on this ordinance is Allison Miller. Good evening, Ms. Miller. Please state your name and who you represent, and she's also speaking in support of this ordinance.
Hi, my name's Allison Miller. I'm here with the Bread Organization, here to support this ordinance, and I'm here to talk about housing from the perspective of a millennial, which I am. So this past summer, I moved to Ohio to serve as an AmeriCorps Vista, and Vista's earnest stipend, that's equivalent to the poverty rate in whatever county they're serving in, so here in Columbus, that's about $12,000 per year. Luckily, I found a roommate through a friend, and I had a father who was willing to co-sign my lease, but this was the only way that I would be able to afford housing in Columbus, and still, my housing costs are over 50% of my income. And it's stressful, having half of your tiny little income disappear every month in one fell swoop. After that, every dollar counts. I don't have a car, I don't drink alcohol, and I don't get any money from my parents, and it's still hard to make ends meet each month. So I'm a young college grad who chose to serve my community, and maybe I could get a job in the private sector next year, like other young professionals, and get a nice apartment in the short north and go to shops and restaurants on the weekends, but that's not what I or most millennials want. We want affordable housing, too. We don't want to spend $1,000 a month on new apartments with granite countertops and exercise rooms. We want to start paying off our, on average, $40,000 in student loan debt. We want to be able to start saving for homeownership one day, and we maybe even want to start saving for retirement, as pensions become non-existent and second jobs are normal. And importantly, we don't want to have to choose between serving our community and affording rent. So I would like to again offer my support for this ordinance and emphasize that there are not enough solutions right now from the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio. We're happy with the mayor's new ballot initiative, but we know that more is needed. Bread supports this ordinance and also would like to encourage more housing for families that are making less than $42,000 a year, and also give an additional $5 million to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund each year. What would it take for this city to grant these requests? Thank you.
Well, Ms. Miller, I know you've been in council chambers this evening, and certainly heard Councilmember Favors' comments in regards to affordable housing in the hearing that she'll also be having, but you also are aware that if the vote of bond package is to pass, there's $50 million in the vote of bond package. We know that, how important affordable housing is to our community, and we, as a city, are focused in that area. I also want to thank you for your service as an AmeriCorps Vista member. I had the opportunity to start City Year Columbus, and I worked with AmeriCorps members for 13, almost, I think 13 years, so I understand the importance of young people like yourself providing service to our community and working on a stipend, so I thank you for you coming to our city and doing that. And you're right, we also are keenly aware of a high cost of a college education and the loans that individuals have, and so we would hope that we- And so we would hope that we can continue to have these conversations and continue the work to make sure that we have affordable housing in our community. I also want to, I also thank the developers, because we don't have but a few developers who are really willing to do this work around affordable housing and also to do, have really great products. And I have to say that I've been in a number of the Walter Cooper facilities and residences, and they do a really great job. And so they were just here last week, and I think it was from 13, I think the amount was not even $42,000. I can't think of the amount right now, but it was for definitely a lower, a lower yearly income that individuals could be able to live on their properties. So I thank you for coming down and thank you for being supportive of this legislation this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. There aren't any speakers against this legislation this evening, and I don't, and again, we don't have an area commission, and I don't know if there's a reason, if, Joe, if you need to respond, I mean, I don't think there's, okay. So with that, if there are any questions, comments from my colleagues? Seeing that, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
All right. The next ordinance is 0316-2019, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.03, R1 Residential District, and 3332.21A Building Lines of the Columbusty Codes for the property located at 4871 Roberts Road, to permit multi-unit residential building with reduced building setback along, setback line along Roberts Road in the R1 Residential District. The applicant is Woda Cooper Companies, Inc., care of, let's see, care of Dave Perry, Joe McCabe. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission. Again, we do have a speaker, and it was Ms. Burning. I don't know if she wants to speak on this one again. No, there's no need to speak on this one. Thank you. So with that, we, I would ask that, we don't have any other speakers, and I would, if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues on this, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 320-2019, to rezon 5704 Chantry Drive, being 4.29 acres, located on the north side of Chantry Drive, 1,500, 1,500 feet west of Bryce Road, from LC4 Limited Commercial District to LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Chantry Drive, LTD, number two, care of attorney Jeffrey L. Brown. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The Far East Area Commission's recommendation is approval, eight to zero, eight, eight zero one, I'm sorry. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 321-2019, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.255, perimeter yard of the Columbusty Codes, for the property located at 5704 Chantry Drive, to permit a multi-unit residential development with reduced perimeter yard in the LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Chantry Drive, LTD, and number two, care of attorney Jeffrey L. Brown. Proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Far East Area Commission's recommendation is approval, eight, eight to one. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, and now move for passage.
Please, is there a second? Please call the roll.
We passed. Thank you. Yes, move for passage. Thank you. All right. The next one is 03344-2019, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039, R4 Residential District, 3312.21, landscaping and screening, 3321.05B2, vision clearance, 3325.3331B, setback requirements, 3325.361, landscaping and screening, 3332.25, maximum side yard required, 3332.26C2, minimum side yard permitted, and 3371.01FP1, private parking district of the Columbusty Codes, for the property located at 38E 6th Avenue, to permit a parking lot with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential District and the P1 Parking District. The applicant is County Kleema Attorney. The proposed use is a parking lot. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the University Air Commission's recommendation is approval, 16 to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 41-2019, to rezon 5850 Sunberry Road, being 6.3 acres, located on the east side of Sunberry Road, 1,000 feet south of State Route 161, from the R rule District to the LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Metro Development LLC, care of attorney Jill Tangman. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northland Community Council's recommendation is 13 to three. I first move to take, are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing that, I first move to take from the table.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Remove from the table.
Thank you. Now I move to amend this, submit to the clerk.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. Now I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And the final ordinance in zoning this evening is 42-2019, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.255, perimeter yard of the Columbusty Codes, for the property located at 5850 Sunberry Road, to permit, to permit an apartment complex with reduced perimeter yard in the LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Metro Development LLC, care of attorney Jill Tangman. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northland Community Council's recommendation is approval, 13 to three. I first move to take from the table.
Please call the roll.
Brown, favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Remove from the table.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have in the zoning committee this evening.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Seeing no further business coming for the zoning committee, may I get a motion to adjourn meeting number eight? Please call the roll.
Brown, favor, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We will take non-agenda speakers momentarily.